I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that our district clerk leads us in the pledge.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. May I have a motion, please, that the agenda of October 22nd, 2013 be approved as submitted? Second, questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed. And may I have a motion, please, that the board approve the consent agenda as listed in your agenda? Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Five in favor. Thank you. In your packet is the treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st, 2013. May I have a motion, please, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue, an expense budget report for the month ending August 31st, 2013, be approved? So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed. We have no special reports this evening. Visitors speaking time. We do not have anybody who has requested to address the board. So we move on to our student representative. Good evening, Gwen.
Hi. So some things that are happening at the high school kind of soon are Monday, the 28th, at 2:30, so it's right after school, so students can attend. There's going to be like a question and answer session with Republicans and Democrats who are running for town board, I believe. And I think Tim Murphy, Jeff Burns, Andy Moore, and Paula Metzler will be there, or at least try to be there. And earlier than that, this Thursday, I'm open to all of the public in the West Gym. Jim Keedy is coming, who is the man who educates people about the Nike sweatshops. And he was actually supposed to come last year, but due to some scheduling conflicts, he's actually coming this Thursday. So we encourage anyone from the public, very welcome to come. He's a very passionate speaker. You can watch his video on YouTube, it's Behind the Swoosh. He is doing the presentation, 7:30 on Thursday, and then he's coming in Friday to do kind of like one-on-one with social studies classes. So something that's been going on, starting, I think they started in October, is every month, there's a harvest of the month at the high school, where it's actually one parent started this, Linda Phillips, and she has promoted bringing in local produce, so that's seasonal produce, and making it in something that is appealing to eat for students. So we're really trying to like work in getting farm-fresh produce to students here in Penfield and encouraging them to try it and explore eating better. And there really hadn't been a student push behind it. And Interact Club actually just joined with her and is promoting that in the café and in the commons. And they're like handing, you know, they're walking around with the trays of the food, and you can try it, and if you try it, you get a little sticker that says like, "I tried Harvest of the Month." So that's really good, because that hasn't happened before. Interact Club also does the boys versus girls field hockey game, which will be early November, although the date is not set yet. And all the proceeds from that game go to the Wounded Warrior Project. Next week is Red Ribbon Week. And I know the health at the high school, there's not as much of a big program during Red Ribbon Week as there is in the middle school and at the elementary schools. But there are PAs that go on the announcement, and I think SAD will do some events. I know that I was just looking at my stuff the other day, and I found this hilarious little drawing that I made when I was at Indian Landing as a first grader that says "Too Cool to Do Drugs," that we made during Red Ribbon Week. So I, they probably still do stuff like this at the elementary schools and the middle schools. So that's just a little fun thing that I found, I still have it, surprisingly. And upcoming in November, there's a half-day for students. And Mr. Gabey just came up with a plan that all the AP government classes are planning on cleaning up the courtyards in the school during the half-day as kind of a service project to the school. So hopefully in the spring, when it gets nice again, everyone can kind of use the courtyards better. And tomorrow, I believe there's an orchestra concert.
All right. Thank you, Gwen.
Many things.
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, Gwen. We now move on to our superintendent's reports. Dr. Grimm.
Okay. I'm a little excited about tonight's reports because they provide a very nice focus on really our core business, our instructional report summary, also really looking into the effect of the implementation of full-day kindergarten, which is exciting. We've got some presenters here tonight to talk about that with us. So let's see, move forward. There we are. Also, as part of my reports, we'll have student-staff honors. We'll have a summary of the superintendent's conference day that occurred last week. And I mentioned instructional data summary in the kindergarten and first-grade program update. We'll also be taking a look at the budget process, beginning with a foundational document, the goals, assumptions, and guidelines. And we will take a look at security status of the capital project. We had that report, and we're looking at integrating that into our capital project plans. And another review of the athletics and field lights, a review of the final scope and the schedule and next steps. So our student-staff honors, we had an outstanding participant. Penfield High School senior Arianna James is among the 3,100 outstanding participants being referred to by U.S. colleges and universities by National Achievement Scholarship Program. She achieved this recognition by scoring in the top 3% of more than 160,000 black Americans who took the 2012 PSAT exam. Congratulations, Arianna. Empire Games, 34 Penfield athletes and 43 junior and senior buddies participated in the Empire Games for the Physically Challenged at SUNY Brockport on October 18th. And I was there firsthand to see that just the, Penfield had the largest contingent, and the best contingent, I would say, the most enthusiastic. And they just were wonderful to watch and be a part of. It's really exciting. We're looking at bringing back the Buddy Olympics this coming spring, late spring. Scribner's done it every year, and we're going to try to, it's kind of a model after that just for Penfield, so we're excited about that. What was also amazing was the junior and senior buddies helping the kids. And you could just see the, what was happening there. They were just, it was incredible. So congratulations to all the students who were involved. Penfield cheerleaders are the champions at the Schrader Showdown. It's a mouthful. They came in first place right up the road and just are excited and what kind of momentum to move into sectional competition coming up. Great group. We had our superintendent's conference day, which is a great day for professional development. I'm going to let Jim Pfeifer, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, talk a little bit about the planning. Him and his staff did a wonderful job of collaboratively planning the work around the needs of our teachers, and not just teachers, but our teaching assistants and psychologists and all of our, all of our staff. So Jim, tell us a little bit more about that.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. As you can see with the agenda that was sent out to our staff, it really was a very encompassing day on October 11th for all staff K to 12, including our paraprofessionals, our rental health staff, and also our clerical staff in the district. Really, kudos go out to the Office of Instruction and John Aright and Leslie Maloney, Lynn Rainey, as well as the members of the data team, because everyone was involved in providing professional development for really all levels of our, of our staff and faculty here in Penfield on that day. It was quite the endeavor and a challenge logistically to pull it all off with a lot of moving parts. It wasn't everyone going to a single space or staying in a single space throughout the day. As you can see, there was time built in for various departments to work on their assessments and SLOs as part of the APPR process, where they were working with their building-level administrators. There was department time built in for the special areas to work K to 12 and build that vertical cohesion that we've been talking about. And then in the afternoon, we had the opportunity to provide a baseline regarding the Common Core learning standards and the instructional shifts in those standards. And we recognize that for some folks, this, this information may have been somewhat repetitive, but we felt it was important for those that are in the know to see the message being given to those who may not have been in the know and establish a baseline of understanding around the shifts so that we can begin to move forward and integrate those shifts across all disciplines and ensure that we're all on the same page. And it gave us a nice starting point. And as far as the elementary schools go, we had our staff engaging in professional development around the implementation of the math expressions. And we had some presenters come in from math expressions. And then we also, for the first time, had some cross-grade level scoring of our formative assessment, the Ready Assessment, that we gave as a beginning-of-year assessment to establish a baseline of data for where our elementary school students are in terms of meeting the Common Core learning standards in their various grade levels. And it was a great opportunity to build the understanding of some, for some of the staff who don't experience New York State assessments, and what those assessments are like and what it's like to have to score those very difficult questions. So it was a great opportunity to build that understanding and have conversations about what the expectations are across the grade levels K to five. And then, as you can see, our SL staff, I spent time with our SL staff developing their SLOs on this morning. Our psychologists, social workers, and counselors had some professional development around the new graduation requirements. And also did some, there was some webinar work by our speech-language pathologists and more Ready Scoring by our SL staff. In addition to that, there was work around the FBA requirements and the legal ramifications of doing that correctly in time to analyze our FBA processes here in the district and begin to make those adjustments. So very much a lot of work going on. And then our clerical staff had a lot of options. Thanks to Sue Coomer, she provided some DASA update training for some of our staff. So we're working on making sure that we're fully aligned there and beginning to provide that training. All of our paras and hall monitors and various other staff engaged in some autism awareness training for students on the spectrum. So that was very holistic, a large group, close to 100 people, I think, participated in that. And then our, again, our clerical staff had the opportunity to work in some Excel courses, develop their understandings and abilities with the Infinite Campus Program. And then also, we provided some support around Oasis and the APPR programs and My Learning Plan and things of that nature. So really, again, the instruction team did a great job, all hands on deck, and really, everybody came together to provide a pretty meaningful day. And, you know, we, to be honest, we had some mixed feedback. But I think overall, 80% of the folks who responded to a survey, which I thought was pretty good, we had almost 200 respondents, felt that the day held some value for them. So I think that's a good start for us. We gathered a lot of great feedback on how to move forward with the additional days that we plan. And we're going to be examining that data and putting it to work as we plan the future days, beginning on Friday.
In addition to all of that planning, is the preparation of the next report, which you saw as a, as a long document, probably 70 or so pages. And then there's now.
Before we move on, Dr. Grimm, do you have any questions or comments about this part of the report? Barb?
Jim, and, and everybody, I just, of course, you know, being the special ed person, I, very, very nice to see that the TAs and the security people were involved in an awareness about your autistic or spectrum kids, because that's huge, you know, just knowing what happened a couple of years ago in Victor. Just to be aware of that, you know, things are just a little bit different. The reaction time is different, or, you know, and everything. That was a beautiful piece to see, and I'm sure that the parents, as well as the students, are appreciative of that piece. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you for the feedback.
Mark?
Jim, I wanted to ask about the Ready Assessment tests. But I want to know, is it better to ask that before this, your next presentation or wait till afterwards?
You're welcome to ask now, and if I believe the, the answer will be in there, then I'll share with you then.
Did we do the Ready Assessment test last year, or is this the first year of this activity?
It was administered in several buildings, at least two buildings last year, to my understanding. This is the first year where, when we examined the various assessments that were being administered across the buildings K to five and made some decisions about what we would continue with and how would we build consistency K to five, this was the benchmark assessment that we decided we would keep and administer in a consistent manner.
Do you have any comparison of last year, which was before the Common Core came on full bore, and this year's Ready Assessment? Because now the students have gone through a whole year of the Common Core and the testing last year. Now we have the Ready Assessment this year. Have you seen any difference or any change in the results?
I haven't dug into last year's results at all yet. And again, it was, it was limited in terms of its scope and where it was administered. So I think this will be the first year that'll give us a solid idea of where are we as a baseline across the district with giving that at the beginning of year. And it's important to remember that, you know, it's, it's a kind of a pre-assessment to see where are we in terms of where the kids are supposed to be at the end of the school year. So the, at the elementary buildings, they have their data days coming up. They're using this to help inform the instructional groups in areas of need and instructional focus. And from there, we'll administer it one more time later in the year, probably late winter, to make sure that we're on the right path. But we'll also be looking at, looking at that data at the administrative level when we're meeting as an elementary cabinet to see, are there trends or patterns across the district K to five? And if, if there are, are there's areas where we see deficits in one area or building and strengths in another, what are we doing? Let's start to have those conversations about what's working well and share those strategies across the district. So we'll begin to build that baseline and hopefully look for trends in the coming years. But we all are also going to be examining our options in terms of this type of assessment and see, is this the best tool moving forward?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Great, great questions. So the instructional data analysis of all of our assessments that were given last year. And Jim will take us from K to 12, really, 3 to 12, I guess, the state tests, including the Regents exams. So, Jim?
So just starting off with our district statistics, which are available on the website, and an overview of the buildings that are serving our students. As you can see, approximately 35,000 folks live in the district, with a total enrollment of almost 4,500 students, 429 professional staff, and 473 support staff. So a great deal going on to help kids be successful. Obviously, we are driven in large part and taking our direction from the New York State Education Department in terms of, and in the form of the Regents Reform Agenda, looking at using data to drive our instruction, implementing the Common Core learning standards, and ensuring teacher leader effectiveness. All of this in order to ultimately graduate students who are common and career-ready, or college and career-ready. However, we do that through the lens and the mode of what is important here in Penfield in our mission statement. And I really think the focal word here, the key word in this statement this year from Dr. Grimm and through our meetings with administrators, has been collaboratively. There is a tremendous focus on meeting these challenges in a collaborative fashion because we recognize that it cannot be done in silos, it cannot be done alone. We need to be working together, K to 12, and along, and outside of the school walls with the community to ensure our students' success. The number-one goal and the focus of this summary is really to demonstrate our improved student achievement and progress toward our academic excellence. And again, it's important to know that we're using data in many forms, not just the data collected from assessments, even though that's the focus of this presentation, to meet the needs of students and ensure their progress toward that academic excellence. So at the district level, this is a model or a visual of the database-driven, or database decision-making model, where we do have the Common Core learning standards, which inform our curricula. And from that, we plan our instruction, assess our instruction in the student learning, and gather data from that. That data, along with the data that we are able to pull from the APPR process, is used to help us determine our professional development options. And all of that, again, centered around student achievement. At the school level, again, focusing on student achievement and student learning, making sure that we have progress monitoring. And this really encompasses and demonstrates the RTI model that we have. Screening students, monitoring their progress, making decisions about grouping, whether it's their whole group, for example, the core math instruction changes this year with lower students working in certain groups and higher-performing students working with enrichment teachers. And then also, what are they, students, doing during the RTI blocks? And then right down to the whole-child view and how, what are we doing to ensure the students' success throughout the school, in each school? And we're doing this in a more consistent manner than ever before, K to five. And at the classroom level, our teachers are planning and implementing instruction that is engaging and aligned to the Common Core learning standards. They are performing assessments all the time. Many of them, oftentimes, the students don't even realize they're being assessed with a slight tick it out the door, write something on a post-it note, and place it in a certain spot on a poster to demonstrate to the teacher your level of understanding. Right down to formative, or, I'm sorry, to more traditional summative assessments like unit tests. All of this information is continually being gathered by our teachers and used to inform their instruction as they move forward throughout the year and through the curricula. Having done all that last year, and I certainly can't take any credit for this, this is certainly due to the efforts of the folks that were here last year. But this is a quick recap of many of the recognitions that the district received as a result of their performance throughout the 2012-13 school year, one of which was being, the high school being named in Newsweek Magazine's 2013 List of America's Best High Schools. And my curiosity got the better of me, and I had to look and see, well, exactly what number did we get to? And we were number 393 out of 2,000 ranked high schools. And then I thought, well, if they ranked 2,000 high schools, how many high schools are there? And I found that there are somewhere between 24,000 and 26,000 secondary schools in the United States. So you take that, they only took the top 2,000, and Penfield High School last year was, you know, in the top 400. I think that's quite an accomplishment. So great job to the high school staff and administration and the support of the instruction office in helping them get there. So we also have recognition for our outstanding music program. And all of our schools were ranked in great standing in the business first based on our assessment results as well, which we've seen before. One of the new ones that we also found was the five-star district ratings in Business First for scoring in the top 10% out of 429 districts in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, based on two years, two to four years of that data there. So another great kudos from Business First. Our elementary schools continue to perform well. And again, we were number one in Monroe County in math in grades three through eight and number three in Monroe County in ELA last year on the state assessments and comparative data. Our graduation rates continue to be in the, in the 90s and performing strong. And our performance on national tests in the SAT and the ACT, our students continue to do very well above the national and state averages. And we'll be looking at some of that data a little bit more closely later on in the presentation. And again, we had 148 seniors and 2013 graduates named to the AP Scholars based on their achievement on AP exams. And seven students were named as national scholars. So our students continue to perform at a high level. So getting into some of the data, this is information that you've seen before as this information was released. But you can see our mastery level and our proficiency levels on the three-through-eight assessments in ELA and mathematics. And here, really narrowing that scope to a narrower picture for you. In grades three through five on the ELA assessment, we had 59% of our students achieve proficiency. So that's mastery and passing levels three and four. 51% of our fourth graders and 60% of our fifth graders, for an average, they're 57% achieving proficiency. And, and those numbers, when we look at them, are interesting because then when you look down and you look at our ranking trends in terms of proficiency and mastery as compared to the other 10 districts in our BOSIs area, comparatively, we've performed very well. As you can see, for the last three years, we've consistently been in the top four in terms of ELA, and also in the top four, I'm sorry, in terms of proficiency, and also in the top four in terms of mastery. Similar results, New York State Math, slightly higher proficiency percentages in math. And obviously, we've had a great deal of focus and, I think, more consistent leadership in terms of math with Dr. Maloney being the piece of consistency through the course of last year with some of the changes in the instruction office that took place, with 74% of our third graders, 64% of our fourth graders, and 75% of our fifth graders achieving proficiency. But our BOSIs ranking, our comparative data in terms of proficiency and mastery, I mean, really, the district has been at the top in terms of grades three through five, despite the challenges posed by the Common Core and then the predicted dip that we saw there. So continued outstanding job. And in science, in fourth grade, 95% of our students achieving proficiency, and 72 of them, nearly three-quarters, achieving mastery in the New York State Science Assessment. So our, our performance continues to be strong, but not without areas where we can improve. Our comparative results are very positive. And that's where you see those three-year trends in terms of our ranking compared to the regional BOSIs. And I think that's in large part due to the fact, the efforts that were made last year to align to the Common Core learning standards in preparation for those assessments. And the impact of the RTI model that we've seen in several of our buildings has also helped students raise their level of understanding and their skills and abilities to meet the challenges of the Common Core. However, there's, there's work to be done. When we go back and we look at those percentages, and as I was speaking, watching your faces, and the same thing as I felt, you know, our ranking is great, and that's one perspective on this. But I don't think anyone here would be satisfied with those proficiency numbers in the long term. And that's where our work needs to be done. And that's where those numbers need to improve. And they will improve through the efforts of the folks that are sitting out there in the audience chairs right now and the efforts of the instruction office. So what are we going to do? We need to further align our curricula in terms of ELA and math to the Common Core learning standards. We did an initial alignment last year, and this year, that work through the implementation of math expressions and through the other work that we're doing in ELA, we are further aligning to those standards. And we're also embedding those instructional shifts that we talked about during the Common Core presentation that you saw two weeks ago. Those are becoming further embedded through professional development in the work that the teachers are doing on a daily basis. And that will develop the students' skills and abilities in those areas to further improve their performance. And we're going to be, through the course of this year, researching and implementing consistent resources and processes across the four elementary buildings. We are striving for greater consistency. If we pool our efforts, we can have a much larger impact and a positive impact on student performance. So we really need to look at that in terms of ELA and develop what is our vision and what is our framework for balanced literacy instruction here in the district and deliver that message and ensure that message and provide the necessary staff development to that end across the four elementary buildings. And then further develop the processes and procedures and tools associated with this tremendous RTI model that we have. We have a lot of tools available to us in the district, and we needed to improve the consistency with which they're used and the fidelity with which they're used in order to maximize their impact. What have we done so far? Well, K to five, you know, we've implemented the math expressions as a resource and a program to help us achieve the Common Core learning standards. We do have the consistent RTI framework now across all four elementary buildings. And we are continuing to provide Common Core and shift-focused professional development for our staff K to 12 to ensure that they are well-versed in those strategies. Any questions about three to five?
Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
So moving on to the middle school in grades six through eight. As you can see, on the New York State ELA assessment, 58% of sixth graders, 52% of seventh graders, and 61% of eighth graders achieved at the proficient levels. And overall, in terms of ranking, we've been in the top four to top six, top four in terms of proficiency and top six in terms of mastery over the course of the last three years. And we see some, some areas of improvement there, and we're continuing to strive for that. In terms of the New York State Math Assessment, again, the number is just slightly higher. 67% of sixth graders, 54% of seventh graders, and 66% of eighth graders achieving proficiency. And our ranking has been a little bit higher in math, as we also saw that at the elementary school. And again, I think that's just been due in large part to the efforts of Dr. Maloney and the consistency that she's provided in the program. But consistently in the top four in terms of our rankings and proficiency and mastery. And approximately 89% proficiency in New York Science, eight, and 39% achieving mastery. And it's interesting here, one of the things that can impact this number, why it might be slightly lower than what we see at fourth grade, is many of our highest-performing students may elect to take Living Environment. And there is a waiver available for them. So if they take the Living Environment Regents Exam as an eighth grader, they do not have to take the eighth-grade science exam. So some of our highest-performing students are taking this test, which is, may impact the numbers and knock down that overall proficiency and those mastery numbers a little bit. So what are our key findings? Again, the comparative results are very good, and the efforts to align to the Common Core learning standards last year. And, and really, what was done was we took what we were currently doing and saw, and made sure that we were addressing the standards. The difference now is we are making sure that we are teaching to the standards and embedding the strategies to help students be successful with the standards in a far more targeted fashion. So we're changing our instructional practices to ensure success. We need to continue to further align ELA and math to the Common Core. We need to embed those shifts, again, across the content areas. Literacy is not just an English teacher's job or a reading teacher's job. All of our technical area teachers, they need to teach kids how to read those technical texts. There is technical literacy across the board, music, art, all of those areas. And we're working on developing their capacity to do that. And we'll continue, again, to research and implement consistent resources and processes in ELA and RTI. The middle school is really just coming on board with the RTI. And the middle school is really just coming on board with the RTI. At one point over the summer, I stopped in and saw one of the rooms, the planning rooms, where there were several folks from the counseling staff, and Wynton Buddington was there, and they were almost like mad scientists withdrawing in notes all over all the whiteboards, and they were sliding them around and really working hard to develop a really meaningful and impactful RTI program for the middle school. So what have we done so far? We've adapted and implemented the Common Core math modules in grades six through eight as a resource and a means to ensure that our students are meeting the demands of the Common Core standards in mathematics, and we, again, are continuing to provide and making sure that we're providing Common Core-based professional development and ensuring that our teachers are well-versed within the shifts. Any questions regarding six through eight?
Catherine?
I think you explained this last time we were together, last time we met, about, I want to make sure I understand this, so if I still have questions about it, I'm assuming other people do, but, okay. So the, the problem, if you will, behind some of these numbers, do I understand this correctly, that the normal, or well, what we had been doing all along, the way students have been taught, has been building on the year before? And now, because of these new shifts, what was taught before doesn't necessarily apply to what is being taught now? Is that correct? Is that affecting these numbers somewhat?
Absolutely, and that's the implementation gap that we talked about last time in terms of instruction, that when you're teaching a fourth grader this year to the level of the Common Core, you're, it's under the assumption, when you, when you fully implement K to eight, as we were, as we had to do, that all the years leading up to that, they were instructed to the Common Core standards in the preceding grades. And we know that not to be true, because we've only been instructing to the Common Core for the last two years. So there are gaps. There are gaps in the students' skills and abilities and knowledge, and there are gaps in our teachers' knowledge and ability to teach to the Common Core standards, and they are doing a great job of filling, but it is, there is a gap there that needs to be closed. And as we continue to teach to the level of the Common Core, that gap will close. When there's a gap like that, you also have an implementation dip, and that's the dip in scores that was predicted by the commissioner and the Board of Regents. We're implementing this new program, the expectations are higher, and you've only been teaching to them for one year, we expect the scores are going to go down. And so that's what we're seeing across the board. Thankfully, here in Penfield, ours went down a little bit less than some other districts, resulting in those great comparative numbers, but again, going back even at the middle school level, you know, in the 50 and 60% of proficiency, we've got some work to do there. And we recognize that, and we're going to be meeting that challenge, and in the 50s and 60s, again, you know, two-thirds, we will be working diligently to see, to change that trend. You know, our trend was pretty level, and maybe even climbing in some areas until this point, and you'll see every district, all of a sudden, there's that dip, and now we're all going to be working to get back on the upswing again here as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Barb?
Jim, something that I just wanted to make comment about with the, the math, three through five, with your BOSIs ranking, you know, proficiency and mastery level, that's at number one, and then it just kind of stuck out to me that, then you go to the sixth grade results, and they're number one. So that, to me, speaks volumes for them being, because coming into the middle school piece, they're coming from all four elementary schools. I just think that's a nice thing to point out, that the elementary people are obviously on board, and it's working. I noticed.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, can I ask you something? It seems like we've improved with ELA. We've always had the, you know, we always identified that we're not doing as well in ELA, and there's been years where it was way worse than we are right now. So thankfully, things are improving, but is it just me, or are we more focused on math? Because I feel like we've adopted a new math program, we've adopted, you know, you know, a lot of what we did in the, you know, superintendent conference day was all about math, yet our scores in ELA are not that great. I mean, they're not rock bottom, but we could be doing way better. So is it just my impression, or can you speak?
No, I think your observation is accurate, and again, I go back to consistency, consistency and leadership that Dr. Maloney provided, you know, for STEM and for mathematics, and ensuring that folks were aligned. You know, we were absent a director of humanities for a significant portion of last year, an interim in the ASI office, and so, you know, looking at getting, providing more direction there, and again, looking at this year as, what is the best course of action for Penfield? We've made some strides, we're working on embedding the professional development and the shifts, so that we're addressing the strategies, and we want to align that across the district, and we're going to be taking those steps. And now that we have John Wright in place, and she's been working diligently, running around, meeting with as many people as she can, as often as she can, and trying to provide the same level of support that Leslie has provided to the math program over the last two years, and we will get there, we will get there. And reading and writing and language arts is a slightly different animal as well. Math is very scientific, you know, the building blocks are easy to see, they're easy to get to. Reading is far more difficult, writing can be far more difficult, although the expectations kind of spiral and increase as kids travel through the grades, but it can be a little bit tougher to get to. But we'll be working on it, and we're going to work to change that, and hopefully, we'll have different observations in a few short years.
Very good. All right, thank you.
No pressure. Moving on to the high school. Having really, for the first time in creating this report, looking at our regions, our performance, our students' performance on Regents assessments, and the level of mastery, the percentage of students that pass, but then looking at the percentages that achieve mastery on these assessments, is very, very impressive to someone who's new to the district. And really, those teachers are doing an outstanding job preparing those students for those Regents assessments, and it's important to remember that those are still aligned to the standards that were created in 2005, and with the exception of algebra that we'll talk about soon, this will be the first test this year with algebra in the spring that's going to be aligned to the Common Core. So while, you know, we're work, we've got the option to kind of go through this phase and process and develop it to ensure that we can keep our proficiency and our mastery numbers high, even when the Common Core tests come. It'll be a challenge the first year or two until we get used to that assessment and preparing kids for it, but I think our staff are up to that challenge as well. Our ACT scores continue to be strong and well above the state average. Students continue to do well. We have seen more, an increase in students taking the ACT over the last three years. So we do notice that little bit of a dip from 26 and a tenth to 25 and eight tenths, 24, 25 and four tenths, but we went from 140 kids to 144, and then jumped up to 160 students last year taking the ACT. So you've almost brought in, really, you've reached down to another level of students who are coming in, and we're going to be working to hopefully help them be more successful, but it would definitely have an impact on the data. Our SAT results continue to be strong. Again, you'll see that we have a trend there of what looks like fewer students taking the SAT. Our cohort, that, those classes are slightly smaller in size each year, so the number of students that we have in the graduating class each year has gone down each of those three years, but it's also important to note that you see the 2014 column there, that's incomplete data. Those students who are class of 2014 still have the opportunity to take the SAT, and remember, with the SAT, you get the best of each component to produce that score. So that data, we really won't have that full picture and know what that trend really looks like probably until very late this year and the next year. And our graduation rates, again, if you look at that top bar in terms of our overall Regents diplomas, you do see a slight drop of 1% each year, but it's important to note that the class of 2013, that doesn't include students who qualified for graduation in August. So once we're able to calculate that and finalize that number, I don't know offhand how many students that entails, but I'm hoping that it pushes that percentage back up and stops that trend in its tracks, and I know Dr. Putnam is as well. So our key findings, our trend data continue to be relatively stable, or in some cases, improving across the assessments. Again, just like three through eight, our data, we compare very, very well to the other districts in Monroe County, and that comparative data is included in the full report that you all have. And our students, as you see by the recognition that the district has received and the high school have received, continue to perform and achieve at very high levels, and they work very, very hard and do a great job. Where we have opportunities for improvement, we need to align English 10 and 11, and Algebra II and Geometry to the Common Core moving forward, because those Common Core assessments are coming, and again, embed those instructional shifts across all the content areas and disciplines. So in Algebra, again, just like in the middle school, in Algebra in the high school, we've adapted and implemented the Common Core modules for Algebra. English 11 is being aligned as we go through to the Common Core learning standards, and so that when those students move on to English 10, that course will be aligned to the Common Core, and English 11 will be aligned to the Common Core, and that will be the year in 2015, 16, that those students take a Common Core-aligned English 11 Regents assessment. And continue to provide the Common Core-focused and shift-focused professional development for our staff at the high school. So how are we going to continue to do that, and where will you see more of this type of information? Through our school improvement plans, which you'll see a great focus, obviously, on academic excellence, but also on our other goals in terms of building partnerships and fiscal responsibility. The elementary school principals will be presenting their plans to you on November 5th, and Bay Trail and the high school will be here to present their plans to you on November 19th. So you get a recap of a little bit of this data, and then what are their specific plans? How are they working at the building level to continue to push for improvement and progress toward academic excellence? So just to review quickly, again, our trend data, especially in terms of comparative data, remains outstanding. Where we have the work to do is in the proficiency percentages in grades three through eight in ELA and math. We'll continue to work through that alignment and refine our alignment, embed the shifts in the content areas, and ensure that we are consistent and pooling our efforts in terms of meeting the demands of the Common Core and the Regents Reform Agenda to ensure our students' success, and the other stuff I just said, so I'm not going to repeat it to you again, you can read that part. Questions with regards to the high school?
Board members, questions, comments? Yes, Gwen?
Just kind of an observation and question. So what it seems to me that the Common Core does is focus on kind of elementary and middle school and just a little bit of high school, so that essentially, is their plan that by the time students get into high school, they should be very, very prepared for like what high school bodes, and then essentially, the college after high school, because it doesn't seem to focus a lot on high school. It seems to be kind of like more essentially focused on the elementary, middle school level.
Right now, that's true, but remember, it's important to keep in mind that the goal of the Common Core is to graduate students who are college and career-ready, which Penfield has traditionally, I think, done a very good job of, but across New York State, there is that gap between the graduation rates and the percentage of those students who graduate who are ready for college and careers and don't need to take remedial courses. So right now, it looks like, and really, the focus has been at the three through eight level, but what we're going to see is an increase, we're, and we had to implement that all in one chunk, three through eight, or K through eight, really, but we've got this opportunity to phase in at the high school level, so this year is Algebra. Next year, we're going to see Algebra, excuse me, Algebra II, the following year Geometry. So you'll see an increase in focus at the high school level and the Common Core as over the course, really, of the next four years, three to four years. So that focus is going to increase, and then it, that pattern will change, and it'll be a K to 12 focus.
So will it only be in those small subjects? Because that's only like, we're seeing the English test and the Algebra and Geometry test, but are there any other focus areas, like the science? Are they going to change the science tests, or the social studies tests, or anything in that area?
The potential is there for that to happen. Right now, new standards are in consideration, the next-generation science standards are kind of being reviewed, and they're potentially going to be adopted, and they're supposed to be developing new social studies standards as well. So it's really going to be a matter of seeing what happens with those standards, and when standards for those content areas or disciplines are adopted, then I think we'll see the adjustment to the assessments as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Mark?
When you talk about those standards, the Common Core is really aligned to a national standard, correct?
Yes, the Common Core state standards are adopted by 21 or 22 states across the country, and then you're, as part of that consortium, you're allowed a 15% variance, so New York State added to that, and that's why you see the difference between, many times you'll see it referred to as the Common Core state standards, but in New York, we refer to them as the Common Core learning standards, because that reflects the additional 15% variance that New York State has put in.
So when you talk about the, the high school standards that they're working on may come out at some point, are these state standards, are they national standards, are they, are they variation of the national standards? How is that aligned?
My understanding, I'll have to look to be sure, but I believe that they're going to be based on national standards, again, like you had, the math standards from 2005, for example, were based on the national math standards, but they were New York's interpretation and revision of them. So the next-generation science standards and social studies standards, I think the push is for them to be nationally-based.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Right, can we go back to the slide that you had that had the checkpoint for?
Foreign languages?
Yes. Okay, so if my understanding is correct, once, you know, Albany took away the exam that we used to have?
The Regents Assessments.
Then we now have a local exam that has been developed between all the school districts.
It's regionally developed through BOSIs, yes.
Okay, and do we look at it again to see, okay, where are we? Are we doing well? What are our results? Is this where we would like to be as far as foreign languages, or?
Yes, John Wright works with the, as part of the Humanities Program, works with our Foreign Language Department to review their data, and, you know, look at how they're doing in terms of trends and continue to monitor their progress and ensure success.
Okay, and perhaps you don't have the answer to this now, but how are we doing compared to other school districts, teaching the same languages we are?
We're doing well, and actually, the Foreign Language Department looked at that, the high school's building a SMART goals, so each department builds SMART goals, so within that department.
Thank you.
Each, the Foreign Language Department as a whole looked at their checkpoint B results, and then it's broken down per language area as well. So we do very well in comparison to everyone else. I think that they're also building their SMART goals based on proficiency and mastery as well. They just recently looked at that data, and I'm going back to that team very soon to look at it again with them.
Okay, all right, very well. I have another question regarding the school improvement plans.
Yes.
Are the shared decision-making teams involved in that?
They do, it is developed collaboratively by the principals, so they work with their building level leadership to develop those goals, and I do believe that there is some involvement of the shared decision-making team as well, but I have to verify that with the principals. My first time through with them as well, so I'm not exactly sure of the processes that they're going through at each one of their buildings.
All right, okay, thank you.
And just before I close, I just want to say that, you know, it's, I think it's very important to remember that this, the focus of this presentation was the instructional data and the assessment results, but that is one measure of how we're doing as a school district, and as someone who has recently come in from the outside, equally as important are the opportunities that we provide to students outside of the classroom to engage in areas of interest and provide them with just tremendous opportunities, and I think that is really a key factor in what makes us such a tremendous school district, and we're not going to lose focus on that, even though we are focusing on the Regents Reform Agenda and the requirements that we have there.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent report, and also, kudos to our instructional staff for their hard work.
Oh, sorry.
I think what I liked, a great presentation, Jim, and I think, one thing from my background that I liked was the fact that there's this continuous enhancement of professional development, and, you know, I know we added some more days this year, and, you know, and this is what, you know, the world outside of schools has done a lot, so I think that's just a great credit, because it's no surprise around the state, we've heard in certain areas, you know, whether it's school boards, school districts, teachers, or parents who are unhappy with the Common Core. And I think our model is excellent because of, you know, the word collaboration that we've brought into it, and there's certainly a lot of collaboration, but as we all know from any business that we run, unless we can professionally develop our staff on a continuous basis, it's not going to work. So I think, I'd just like to give you kudos for that and the development of that.
I appreciate it, but again, I have to give the compliments to the team who did a great job, and also to Hillary Ling Court, who did a tremendous job gathering the data and preparing it for the report and the presentation. She's, she's amazing with the numbers and the tools, so it is truly a team effort all the way around, and they, they do a great job.
Excellent, and with our, with our teachers, and I'm glad Jim also mentioned the well-rounded educational experience, because there's a lot of other folks, our, our coaches, our advisors, our parents, the high expectations that the community has, just, it's a great culture to grow up in, and I think- It's a great culture to grow up in, and I think all of those things add to that success in the academic field. So it's not just the focused and targeted instruction and the shifts and things like that. It's that whole influence that we have as a system on the development of our children. And that's why we're getting these great results. One of the things that is interesting around, as I transition into full-day kindergarten report, it's interesting to see that we didn't have that in this area years ago. And now that we have it, it's kind of like, wow, how could we ever have not had it? And one of the things you'll notice is, you'll see that in the effects of those kindergartners that are now in first grade. And it's startling to see. But it's also, it goes along with what Mr. Piper was talking about in terms of professionally developed and always looking to improve and get better. And that's what we did in that case, and we see the results. But sometimes when you're in the mix of it, you don't see the sense of urgency to do that. And my compliments to this board and the previous administration who took that leap and that difficult transition to move into that program during a very difficult budget time, too, and make that happen. Because the end results, as you'll see tonight, are wonderful to be a part of, and you should feel good about that as a board and a district and a community. So with that transition, I'll transition over to Jim to introduce our full-day kindergarten report.
I had requested about a month ago with Leslie to bring the kindergarten and first-grade leadership together to start to prepare this presentation. And Leslie assured me they had it under control, but I had to make sure for myself and check it out. So I did meet with Kristen and several other first-grade and kindergarten leader, grade-level leaders. And Kristen had already been well-trenched in preparing the presentation and gathering data that you're going to see today. So thank you to Kristen for ensuring that we were prepared and for doing such a great job with it. And thank you to Leslie for assisting her with bringing it all together from across the district. I think you're going to be impressed, and I do think you'll see the dividends paid. I think the timing was opportune to bring in full-day kindergarten with the other challenges that we're facing and to try to meet the challenges of the Common Core without having the experiences and the background that we're going to be developing through full-day K with the students would have made it that much more difficult. So again, coming in when I'm coming in, I thank you all very much for having this project done and in place by the time I got here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kristen and Leslie.
So just to echo Dr. Grimm's comment, I don't know how we would do kindergarten if we weren't in a full-day program. With the changes that have come from the Common Core, it would be a huge challenge. But just to start the presentation off, I'll give you a little review of the timeline. And then Kristen Williamson is joining me. She's a kindergarten teacher at Harris Hill. And as Jim mentioned, last June, Kristen is working on her administrative certification at the University of Rochester. And she came to me last June and said she needed a district-level project. And did I have any ideas? And I said, absolutely, we need data reviewed for full-day kindergarten, and we need to show the impact of full-day kindergarten. What do you think? And so she said, well, can you give me this, 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 and this? And I said, absolutely, I'll give you anything that you want. So I gave her everything, and she's come up with a really great presentation that has some amazing data that I think truly shows both qualitatively and quantitatively the impact of full-day kindergarten. So just to give the public a review of the timeline, we started this process in the winter of two thousand ten and eleven. We formed an early childhood study committee. We researched the impact of full-day kindergarten in the research that was out there. We visited other districts that had recently implemented full-day kindergarten. We looked at every angle in terms of facilities and materials and instructional impact. And in May two thousand eleven, the Board of Education decided to implement full-day kindergarten in two thousand twelve, thirteen. And over the two thousand eleven, twelve year, the kindergarten team met on a regular basis to collaborate on the transition. And that kindergarten team continues to collaborate and to meet monthly and to share resources. They really, truly are the nicest people in the district, the kindergarten teachers. They work so well together. They exemplify sharing, which they teach. And then on September fourth, in two thousand twelve, we had our first day of full-day kindergarten in Penfield, and it went off without any hitches. And then I would really say that the whole first full year of full-day kindergarten went off without any hitches. It was very successful, both from the student's perspective and the teacher's perspective. And I would say even you'll see from the parent's perspective. So I'm going to let Kristen do her thing and share with you her presentation.
Well, I am very excited to be here and share with you how that first full year of full-day K went, and also how those kindergartners are now doing as first graders. So we picked this quote because that's really what has really happened with full-day K, is we're not only able to address academics, but we really can teach character education. What we've done as a district, we adopted a program called Second Step. So all kindergarten teachers across the district are using the same social skills program. And basically, what it is, is it's direct instruction in certain skills, learning skills, such as how to listen and how to focus your attention. It's teaching them about self-talk so that they're better able to follow directions. It's teaching them words like empathy, and it's teaching them how to problem-solve. It's teaching them about how to take a deep breath before you make decisions and things, you know, we're all using every day in our lives now. So, you know, to be able to teach them directly those skills was a big, big change for us. In the half-day program, it felt a little bit more like putting out fires and addressing behaviors as they occurred. So again, we're using it across the district, and our first-grade teachers now have it. So those kids are getting it every year with that same language. So that was a big change for us, which we've really loved. And the kids are using it. So as a teacher, to really hear the children using that same language and to really understand that an apology occurs when you look eye to eye to a person and you make amends versus, you know, a quick terse, "sorry" and moving on is really important to see that. So we also surveyed parents of, who had children in Penfield's half-day program and also in Penfield's, later on in Penfield's, full-day program. And this was kind of what they felt, was now there's one person to communicate with as far as behavior expectations, and there's one set of expectations versus, you know, my child goes there half-day, and then they're with a different set of adults at the Y and a different sticker chart. And so there really was consistency, and the parents saw that and appreciated that with the full-day program. Moving on to academics, again, we saw great gains in academics. Again, we surveyed those parents and really asked them for their input. And that's kind of how parents felt. They felt that their child was coming home more prepared, and they were having to do less skill-based practice at home with them because they were getting so much more at school. So what we did is we looked at some data from the half-day kindergartners over two-year span. So we looked at their end-of-the-year reading levels, and we broke them down into categories below grade level, on grade level, and above grade level. Those are consistent, our benchmarks are consistent with all area districts as far as what those measures are. And we saw it was, you know, a third breakdown for each pretty much, and that's in the half-day program. However, when we looked at the end of the year for our first group of full-day kindergartners, you saw a big change. You're looking at above grade level, it's almost doubled, and the below grade level as well has gone way down. So when we put those data points next to each other, you can see that below grade level, you know, fell off by nearly half, that above grade level went way, way up.
And I think it's important to, I'm going to interject here, and I think it's important to note that our benchmarks, below grade level, on grade level, above grade level, they didn't change between the half-day program and the full-day program. In fact, we continue to monitor from a local perspective in terms of our comparison of those benchmarks with area districts, as well as on a state level and a national level to make sure that we're on top of consistent levels and we're in line with, at the local level and the state and national level. So I think that data is really clean data in terms of how we looked before in the half-day program to the full-day program.
And we saw similar things in writing. So this is a writing sample of a half-day kindergartner at the end of the year. We prompted him to tell us some of his favorite parts of kindergarten. I will interpret it for you. It reads, "I liked when we found Clifford, and I liked the pigs." So you can see he has a nice skill set. He puts spaces between his words. He spells his sight words, but a lot of his spelling is still phonological. And even though it's one topic in his head, to us, it seems a little scattered. But when we look at the writing sample at the end of the year of a full-day kindergartner, again, in the spring with the same prompt, something that you, you know, remember from kindergarten and enjoyed, you could probably read it yourself. "I love seeing the cow being milked. I also like seeing the peacock because I like the blue head and the colorful feather." And you see she has a lot more spelling conventions. She's using standard endings, ED, ING. And her idea of formation seems a little more on topic, and she's also giving us a little more, she's giving us reasons why she liked that peacock. And this is really how the teachers felt. We felt, wow, we're teaching writing every day. The children love it. They have so much to say. They're able to cycle through that writing process independently and come up with some really great pieces. And with our math, again, in a half-day program, you're really teaching math every other day. So we doubled the amount of time that we're able to spend on math, and our biggest problem was, okay, it's March, and they've really met a lot of our benchmarks. We've got to give them more. They're ready for more.
And in terms of our benchmarks in math, I would say that is some, that's an area, because just as Kristen mentioned, there is more time to teach math now. So we've raised our rigor in terms, and our expectations in terms of math.
And the parents felt the same way. So this is a mom who has great longitudinal data with six children who went to a half-day program in Penfield, and now her seventh last year was in full-day. And she really could see that difference in her children. Another wonderful thing that came out of the full-day program was just new opportunities that we were able to take. So every building was able to add an additional field trip to their schedule. Scribner was able to have dogs come in, and the kids were able to practice their reading skills to dogs. Harris Hill had a Bike-A-Thon, which raised like fourteen hundred dollars for missing and exploited children. So these were things we just didn't have time to do in our day, but they're such authentic learning experiences. So we were really happy to be able to have them as part of our day now. And this is another change. You know, sometimes in a half-day, it really was, we need to get to the academics, and you might not have time for developmentally appropriate play where you can practice those social skills. And the parents noticed it, too, that now, you know, their kids were able to play with their peers and really problem-solve. And this is how the teachers felt in half-day. You know, it is stressful to try to teach a child to read and do addition and subtraction and to spell and write in two and a half hours, and if you had a special, it was two hours. And, you know, you felt like you were trying to make these transitions go so quickly, and you were kind of just running around. It is stressful for a teacher. But now, we feel great. We have a full day where we can really reteach things. So if a child doesn't get it, we actually have, as their core instructor, we have time to reteach them those skills. If problems arise, we can actually address them when they arise, and we have time to plan as a team. And part of that kind of calmer feeling that we're having now has to do with the consistency that, you know, Leslie spoke of in the beginning, is we're meeting all the time. And so we're all using consistent resources. We're all using the same writing program in kindergarten, the same math program. So when we meet, we can say, hey, what did you do with that? Can you send that to me? And you just have a lot more people to lean on, and that's been really nice for us.
And I would also echo that and say that you also have the additional RTI providers and the support services that you can access and that students can access within the day in order to provide early intervention.
Definitely, definitely. So we were able to talk to the first-grade teachers and see if all our hard work was paying off, and it seems to be. So when we spoke to them, they really noticed three main areas that were different from what they had seen when they had their half-day kindergartners coming into first grade. The first being procedures. So these kids are coming in now, they know the school routine. They know how to get their lunch. They know how to turn in a workbook and find the correct page, all those kinds of things. And their stamina is greater. They're not, you know, what, first-grade teachers would often say, they're too tired by, you know, the middle, end of the day, whereas now, these kids are very much used to that full day. The other change that the first-grade teachers noted were behaviors. So those listening skills that we're directly teaching, they're actually using them. So they're able to listen for longer periods of time and focus. And what that really is doing is it's buying those first-grade teachers extra instructional time. And then lastly, they noticed those academic changes, which you clearly saw. So they have more pre-reading skills. They have more sight words than they've ever seen first graders coming in with their love of writing and their ability to cycle through that writing process. And then you saw those huge jumps in those reading levels. So they've got kids reading at very high levels now. When we sent the survey out to the parents, one of the kindergartners from full-day, he had some input. So he has a quote he'd like to share with you. It's very insightful and yet very simple at the same time. So in general, you know, the full-day has really benefited not just the students, but the parents and the teachers. And we do, we really appreciate having it as part of our program. So thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments? Barb?
Nice, very nice. Since I was on the original committee, it's fun to listen to this. But I am going to bring up something that I'm sure you probably have already thought One of the big reasons or one of the setbacks about not going forward originally was data saying that by second grade, everybody who was half-time was equal to going full-time kindergarten. Is there something in the works that we can, like, look at that data from when there were kids that were half-day and by second grade? Just curious, because that was one of the big sticking points, that, you know, why are we expending this money when by second grade, they're all cut up?
And I think that's one of the pieces that we need to continue to monitor at all grade levels, particularly with the implementation of the Common Core. Just as Jim talked about earlier, watching for that implementation gap and making sure that we're addressing that implementation gap and assuring that as we roll the Common Core standards up, particularly through this first year of full-day kindergarten, that we're watching for that potential, not dip, but that potential evening off, leveling off.
And I think one other factor that we have to consider with that is, this group of kindergartners is the first cohort who will be completely instructed in the Common Core. So, you know, these first graders, they were Common Core-aligned last year in kindergarten. They were the first group of full-day kindergarten. So there's two, you know, two competing factors there that are going to maybe cause us to examine this data very carefully as we move forward and monitor their progress as they move through the grades.
Well, knowing that Hillary loves to do her little scatterplot things, she's really going to have fun with this one.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I just have to say, I love this because this is what it's all about. This is why we come here Tuesday nights and all those meetings that we have. You know, between both presentations, between the data presentation and this. And I know in a couple of meetings, we're just going to be looking at Excel spreadsheets and watching Mark do his number, you know, his magic with the numbers so that we can keep what we have, so that we can have this kind of program in Penfield. Last week, Dr. Grimm and I were at the Monroe County Executive Committee meeting, and a school board president from a neighboring school district said, well, we're moving to full-day K because I'm tired of people telling us, we're selling our house to go to Penfield. So, you know, for anybody who had any doubts about full-day K, should we have full-day K or not? I mean, this is just such a great testimony for everything you have done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just thought of another one. Remember last year, there was the option that if kids wanted to go half-time? What happened this year? Was there any options for them?
I don't know of any children that requested to go half-time this year. I don't, you don't have any at your building?
No, nope. Everyone's there all day.
Yeah, everyone's all day.
And there were just a couple last year, right?
Just a couple last year, and I don't know of any. And Jim's looking at me like, what are you talking about?
I was just wondering who would want to give up that half-day childcare that they're already paying for through their tax dollars.
Well, there was a contingent of very vocal parents that, nope, they only wanted half-day. So we allowed that, and I just was curious what we were doing this year. See, I remember.
Catherine?
When we moved to Penfield, we came from a school district that had full-day K. And my two oldest children had the full-day K. So my experience was kind of the opposite because when we came here, it was half-day. So I wasn't as aware of what the two had gained. I was aware of what the third one lacked. And it was pretty profound. And it affected him into his, you know, early years of elementary school. So I just, it's not possible for me to be happier about full-day K. So thank you very much. That was a nice presentation.
It was very nice, just seeing the writing, different, you know, writing pieces. I mean, this kind of testimony is not something we always get to see. So we always get excited when there's a video or when there's pictures or something. I love the pictures because they're two little munchkins from my neighborhood that I recognize in there. So thank you for coming this evening. This was a great presentation.
Thank you.
And now, the other half of what is so important for us to understand what we need to do for our educational program and what works and how to do it, how to implement, how to study, plan, respond. And we need to fund it. And it's important to know what it is we're doing is working, and then we know how to make it happen through the financial support to be able to support the different programs. So it is very strategic, and it's a back-and-forth informative process of understanding what we need and then how can we afford it and how can we make it happen. It's been especially challenging in the last four or five years, and it continues to be. And this is the beginning in October. I don't know that we're setting a record in terms of how early we're working on the budget. We do have a record of 101 slides tonight, but...
No.
And Mark's going to make it go higher real quick. We put him last.
I'll do my best. I'd point out that a lot of the hard mine...
This is the foundation, the goals, the assumptions, all of the things that we're building the budget upon, relies on the foundation of this great process Mark has created in this document that is long and it's detailed, but it needs to be because it's that important. So here you go, Mark.
So we'll start with a little bit of calendar. So this is not the first budget presentation you've had because really, although we might not recognize them, our recent previous meeting, we had Mr. Wagner come in from our external auditing firm and talk about, how'd you do last year? So we end one year, we're managing our way through this year, and we're starting to plan the next one. So there's always really three years in play. But this really, tonight's, this presentation really begins the formal budget process. So tonight, you're going to take a first look at goals, assumptions, and guidelines. We'll do that next. We're talking a little bit, we'll sketch out a little bit of the calendar and how we see that goes. By November 5th, you'll be reviewing enrollment projections. In between then, we'll begin the year with a goal-setting workshop. So one of the foundational documents that we depend on as we go throughout our budget process is board goals. So what do you intend to accomplish over the course of the next year? So the, you know, the financial plan, the budget's really just an expression of your instructional plan. So where are we going and how are we going to get there? So early on, we'll have that board-setting workshop end of this month. We'll talk about enrollment projections. At that point, you'll be ready to approve the goals that you're, and the assumptions and guidelines that you're reviewing tonight. We'll start with some more background information in November of a tax cap update, and we'll have a conversation about reserve usage planning, where we see that going into the future. And then we swing really into the meet-a-budget in January, early January. We begin with a review of the administrative budget. On the second meeting in January is a review of the special areas of the instructional budget. So not classroom instruction necessarily, but staff development, special education, counselors, nurses, and so forth. We'll have a conversation on education, which is tentatively scheduled for January 30th, where we begin to involve the public in what we're thinking about in terms of this year's budget and to understand what their concerns are. We'll have a board work session at that same time on February 8th, as we start to put the pieces together. And we continue through a process of budget review in February. We'll look at buildings and grounds, transportation, and debt service. The program, the remaining program pieces of the budget at the end of March, or I'm sorry, beginning of March. Another, we've scheduled, last year was our first year for two conversations on education around budget. We're proposing that we do that again. So a second conversation in March. The first one was really listening. We'll know more and know more about where we're going by that March conversation. So we'll be able to educate and gauge reaction. And we'll review that in a board work session again on budget on March 15th. Continue with Bosie's programs on the 18th of March in April. We're coming close to the end. So we'll review the proposed budget at the, April 8th meeting will be our first entire budget review. We also include benefits, revenue, fund balance, and so forth at that meeting. And we are scheduled to adopt, to approve and adopt on April 22nd. That's necessary, that date's actually necessary for us to make our legal timelines. So by May 6th, we need to, we have scheduled our public hearing, which is the last formal presentation of the budget, and on May 20th, the vote. So this is the first slide. You see this slide every, and we use this slide in every budget presentation. And every time I get a chance to have a conversation from now on, at some point, we'll say this, that the budget hearing's May 6th and that May 20th is the vote date in the high school. So we're here, we need to get there. And this outline is really an outline of a process that gets us between those two points. As always, we'll be updating our website with all the information that we generate as we go along. Is there, are there any questions about the calendar?
All right.
All right. So goals. Tonight's the first look at this. There's a much more comprehensive document in your packet. I'm just going to hit on a few of those as we go through this tonight. But we always begin and we root our process in district goals, the three district goals of academic excellence, partnerships, and fiscal responsibility. So we'll hearken back to that as we move through the process. But certainly, the budget has an awful lot to do with that expression of our program, with academic excellence. So there, in your document, there are nine goals, including your board goals, goals around the budget. There are 18 assumptions, and there are, I think, 19 guidelines. So there's an awful lot here. But we always begin, and your document begins with instruction and begins with what we intend to accomplish over the 14, 15 school year. And certainly, you've heard tonight already some success stories, but also some things to be done around Common Core. So that's going to be part of our conversation as we move forward. We'll need to continue to align our K-12 program, expand and develop response to intervention. That's going to be part of this process as we move along, as well as the reality of the APPR. We'll be in the second year of implementation of that. We'll continue to work through processes and procedures and hiccups, really, that come as a result of that ongoing development. We know from the second year of the tax cap that we learned an awful lot in year two that we didn't fully understand in year one. I think it's fair to assume that there's going to be a lot more conversation. There's already a lot of statewide conversation, isn't there, around APPR? So I think there'll be changes, there'll be learning. It's going to have to inform our budget process as well. One of our goals, one of those nine goals, in addition to your board goals, is a budget goal. And we state it pretty simply, that we'll continue our commitment to prudent financial planning and that the budget will be a balance. We will need to balance, since resources are not endless, we'll need to balance the needs of students. We want to maintain programs and our facilities, and we want to minimize the impact on taxpayers. We know that there are some challenges to that, and some of our assumptions speak to that. So we know, as we move into this year, that there will be revenue reductions in some of our lines. We are already aware of those. We don't know what state aid brings yet. This will be an interesting political year, I think, for that. But certainly, as we sit here tonight, we have no idea. We can anticipate some increased costs, I think, for retirement and for health insurance, and we'll be certainly managing year three of the tax cap. So what do we know about in terms of revenue reductions? We know that for the go-forward year, the states established a new process in the way they budget for state aid. And in New York's, and in New York's way, they didn't exactly stick to it last year. So, but there is a commitment that to tie the growth in state aid to the growth in personal income, which they legislatively determine. So it's projected to be 3.4% or about $722 million statewide. So if everything else remained the same and there were no other political intervening kind of factors, statewide, we'd expect state aid to go up about 3.4%. This is almost exactly what last year's prediction was for, though, as well, 3.4% statewide. And by the time it made it through the political process, it was more than that. And in fact, the governor's initial budget proposed more than that cap. So every year, the budget for state aid is written anew. It's fresh legislation every year. And so every year, they get a chance to change it. Last year, they exceeded what their self-imposed cap. We'll see what happens this year. Last year was an election year. So, you know, this year, not so much. Sales tax will decline. For the last five years, we've been receiving a 1/5 payment in, from the County of Monroe in payment of the Fair Plan. There was a year when they withheld sales tax. So 2013, '14 is the last year of that. And we built into our budget last year $255,000 of federal stimulus money. The early retiree reinsurance program, IRP, will go away. It's already gone. They've closed the website. It's done. So, and I don't anticipate, I think it's fair to say, that new federal stimulus programs aren't going to be part of the mix as we go forward. So that's going to be a challenge, a challenge on our revenue side. On the expense side, there's a little bit of hope, I think, in terms of retiree costs. ERS rates are projected to be about flat. They've already announced, they come out, those rates come out ahead of the TRS rates. And so the average rate, it varies, this varies by tier. So tiers 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, each has a different rate. But on average, for next year, it'll be 20.1%. That's down slightly, ever so slightly, from 20.9. That's not much down, but not going up a lot is, I think we ought to take as a win. It's been going up a lot for the last several years. TRS rates haven't been released yet. I'm, right now, as we start to build our budget estimates and start to try and think about where we're going to end up next year, I'm using 19%. It's 16.25% this year. That was a major increase. Don't forget that the tax cap is, the tax cap allows an exclusion for rate increases over 2%. So the more cynical of my peers believe that this year's TRS rate will be 18.25%, which would put the entire impact of the TRS increase without exclusion on the district. So I'm estimating 19 for now. We'll know more fairly early in the process. So the next couple months will bring information on TRS. But they do have one more year. If you just look at the history, and there's some information in your packet about that, they have one more bad year to make up. So I don't quite see it flattening out as the ERS rates are. Time will tell. Certainly, the market's done well, so, and that has a major impact. Health insurance, 7.5% increase for '14, and we'll estimate a 10% increase for 2015. Again, that's a bit less, just a bit less than we've seen in the last few years. In terms of the tax cap, some of this is old. It's not, we know now, certainly, no, now, it's not a 2% cap. But that continues to confuse people. I think there's conflicting information with regard to that. And this year, for us, it potentially, the 2% factor that does, there is 2% in the formula, it just doesn't turn out to be 2%. That 2% for the last two years has been 2%. But it's the less, the smaller of the rate of inflation or 2%. And for the towns who are on a different fiscal year and already had to adopt their tax cap numbers, it was 1.7%. That may or may not be true for us, but certainly, it's a possibility. So we'll know more about that as we move throughout the early months of the budget cycle as well. We won't have carryover. In the first year of the tax cap, if you'll recall, there was a very significant new growth in the district in terms of assessment. In the second year, we took advantage of some of that carryover. But that's, the opportunity to use that is gone. There'll be no carryover from the previous year. So whatever the formula generates, it'll be what it generates. And as has been true, there's no mandate relief. I always put that on the tax cap slide, simply because they were coupled together. The promise was, two years ago, three years ago, we're going to do this tax cap, but don't worry, we'll provide mandate relief so that you can control your costs. We're moving into year three, and mandate relief remains an illusion. So we'll see what happens, but I'm not hopeful with regard to that. I thought, you know, if there was to be hope, last year's changes, I think, in the legislature might have brought it, but now I don't see it. Terms of budget guidelines, we've talked about goals, we talked about some assumptions. We'll move into guidelines. We're going to continue to monitor our staffing levels. Elementary classes, we'll talk about at the enrollment projection report, but we'll certainly aim to maintain those at the current sizes. Secondary classes at 15 students, anything below that requires your specific authorization. And as always, we want to manage our budget to minimize the impact on students and on classroom instruction. This year, we'll continue to refine and expand our focus on long-range planning. So the board's had, over the course of the last three, four years, my peers, I think, are tired of seeing my little bar chart. I suspect some of you are as well, but we're going to talk about it some more. And we're going to, I think, when we get the opportunity, dig a little deeper into what's behind that trend, which is an overall negative trend, essentially showing over the course of the next three to four years, the district beginning to go into structural deficit with our costs exceeding our revenues. Not right now, but soon. So, you know, that gives us, that not right now part of that warning gives us some planning time. We need to take advantage of that. So this year, I'm going to spend a little bit more time. We've carved out, you saw in the calendar, an entire board presentation without anything conflicting for us to talk about that. So we're going to spend some more time at that, and I expect some more time at the workshops as well. So continue to refine that, continue to talk about that, and continue to attempt to develop some initiatives that make that a concern and not our destiny. So finally, I'd close with this note from our goals, that budget development must reflect our current fiscal realities. We need to balance the needs of students. We need to maintain programs and minimize the impact. the impact on taxpayers. We started there, we'll finish there. That's what we've done for the last several years. We just need to continue with that eye on the future, because there, it is kind of, it is concerning. Is there any questions about budget calendar, about anything I didn't cover? I just touched a few of the items, there's a lot of detail in there, and I didn't feel like it was appropriate for slide after slide. I've already been told there's a lot.
With members, questions, comments? Mike?
Every year, you've been able to make, make it work in terms of what we have to deal with. I mean, you mentioned, I think, in an earlier slide, that 70% of our budget is teacher salary. And during the budget cycle last year, you mentioned that 25, two-thirds of our revenue come from property tax. Hence, property tax doesn't cover our salaries.
Correct.
And we are dependent upon the state for 25% of our income. Whereas, which you mentioned here, and then the more detailed assumptions, the state's commitments are often not reliable. So we are really, we can rely upon our property tax, we can rely upon the, a little bit of the sales tax, and then we've got the 25% is gonna fluctuate. And as you say, it gets tighter and tighter, and it just seems like we're getting down a narrower and narrower path to where eventually we're gonna, we're gonna topple off. And how, and I guess the question is not something I expect you to answer now, but we, we have to figure out, how can we give ourselves a more reliable plan, income to plan for?
Yes. And, and, and what initiatives can we put in place? I mean, we have some planning time, so what can we do that helps with that? I think that's, you know, we've had fits and starts around that. I think we need to sort of rededicate ourselves to some of the initiatives we've talked about in the past.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just gonna make a comment. Mark's work around this, this piece of the meeting will come and go, but I wanna make sure I highlight the importance of the document, the intelligence, and the planning, and the hard work that has gone in, in creating this document, not only for this year, but over, over the years. It really is the foundational instrument that helps guide, not only the Board of Education, but in our work sessions when we're working with principals and teachers and everybody. It's, it's what we build this budget on, and it's important to have a great foundation in anything you do. And this is a great foundation for this budget process, and I thank Mark and, and the entire district office staff for contributing to it.
Thank you. With that, I just wanna, this is, tonight, we need to just review briefly where we're at with regard to the athletics and PE facilities improvement projects, so we'll talk about that. Also talk a little bit about the progress around the security project. This is, this would be repeat for any, for those of you who were at the most recent public forum about this, but a lot of folks hadn't seen it, and, and so we thought it was certainly important to go through where we're at right now. So in terms of proposed final scope, and, and tonight, we are talking about final scope, because one of the questions that has been in the air as we move through the, the planning of this particular project is, is what stays in, what stays out? You know, would, would lights be part of the final project? What, what might be added? There was discussion about adding of various items throughout the course of the discussion. But where we are tonight, what the budget has been based on, what the, what the, what the environmental quality review work has been based upon, essentially is what we've been talking about in the public forums. So East Gym renovations, being a very, a small storage addition to, to eliminate the, the storage box that lives behind the gymnasium now. Energy-efficient lighting, replace the, the poured rubber floor, wall pads, basketball backboards, and replace the, the 1972 air handler. So essentially, renovate and freshen up the gymnasium, the East Gym. This is a schematic of the area of the high school that's impacted by that, it's also on our website, so you can see it a little more closely. Also included, field lighting at the high schools, including lighting at the synthetic turf field, lighting at the track and soccer field, and pathway lights from the community center, estimated cost of $1.4 million. This slide just calls out the area at the high school that would, where the, that work, that exterior work would occur. And this is our source of funds. We're, the attorney right now is working on language that will accomplish this, but essentially, we would appropriate $720,000 from leftover money in previous projects. So as projects have, have been accomplished, to the extent that they've come in under budget, in about five projects, we have 720, a total of 720. We would close the existing 2002 capital reserve, there's a half million, about a half million dollars there, and appropriate the remainder from fund balance. That project, this, so that would fund the, fund that project without additional tax impact and without borrowing. It would be eligible for state aid at about 75%. That money would then be paid back to us over the course of 15 years. The state aid we would receive on the project gets split up and paid back to us over, with interest, over 14 years. That works out to about $162,000 per year, or a total of about $2.4 million in repayments. We've had, we were concerned naturally that we wanted to have lots of public input and conversation about this project, so we've had two public information meetings, one on September 9th, and, and one most recently on October 15th. And you've seen before the slide, this slide where we talked about the September meeting, in October, we've added the data now. So this, this slide is the total of the two meetings and the total of the comments received to date. So there's been, overall, about 240 comments from folks who are supportive of the project. 13 were opposed, nine didn't specify, but had some sort of comment about the work or about impacts and so forth. In terms of the summary of that, Nancy Bradstreet went through and attempted to categorize what the, the comments, the, what they were really relaying. And in terms of main reasons for supporting the project, had to do with safety, had to do, to do with the extended use of the fields, for the ability to use the, the fields in an extended basis for practice, games, the impact that that has on community spirit, pride, you know, certainly the comment that most of the other Monroe County school districts have already lit their fields, and the ability to expand the use of an existing facility. So the, the facility exists, can we use it for longer periods of the time and get, into the night, into the dark, and get better use out of it? The main concerns expressed had to do with the impact on the neighbors, noise and traffic, the cost of it, and, and whether it was a need versus a want. So I'll come back around at the end of this to talk a little bit about next steps and where we're at with regard to schedule. But I wanna talk a little bit about the security project next, because we're beginning to be able to, to push those two parallel paths a little bit closer together. So as you know, this has been under review for some time, we've been working our way through the process with principals, in terms of, we had a security assessment of all of our buildings. Were the district safety committees beginning to work through the management pieces of that review? So, you know, changes in our process, our practice, our staffing, and so on, how do we handle emergency drills, all those kinds of, the work of it? But this process has been handling the potential capital items that were identified. So those include, at all schools, additional cameras on, at the exterior of the schools and in unmonitored areas, some door and hardware replacement throughout the buildings, security film at the entryways, modifying the exterior lighting to allow some night lighting. So that might take the, the place of exterior wall, the wall packs, the lighted wall packs on the outside of the building, or additional poles, and also modifying the lighting to be able to run some of the lights at night rather than all or none. Jurassic alarms for lockdown, that allows sort of a panic button lockdown of the electronic locks throughout the buildings. We don't, we aren't currently able to do that. There are some bill, that's gen, those, that last slide was generally all the items, or the entire school, I should say. There are some building-specific items. So the elementary schools require improvements of various kinds to their PA systems. We need to replace the PA system at the high school, it's quite elderly, and just doesn't do what we need to be able to do. Essentially, what we want to ensure is that PA system is an important method of communication inside the building. So a staff member or a principal needs to be able to communicate quickly and thoroughly throughout the building using that PA system. We have some limitations with the way they are right now, and, and need to correct that. Protect the utilities where they come into the buildings, at the high school and Bay Trail, emergency generators at Bay Trail and Cobble's, that I do not currently have them. Modify the entrance at Indian Landing to create a, a pass through the office, exterior, some exterior lighting at the district office, and a few extra cameras at transportation on the exterior. We're still refining budget, we're working hard on that right now. The initial draft is about $4 million. We have approximately $10 million in a capital reserve, so we would propose that the money be taken from there. And that also would be, then, without additional capital impact. In a future presentation at the next board meeting, we'll have, hopefully, by then have refined the, our data, and I'll be able to give some state aid projections as well. But that's gonna have the same kind of state aid and the same style at the same level as with the athletic project. So 75% of 15-year payback, it'll look much the same. And the intention, as we work through this, is if we're able, we'd like to be able to offer it at the same time as a separate proposition, but at the same time as the athletics and the PE facilities project vote. So just wanna go over calendar a little bit, review what we've done and where we need to go. So beginning back in September of 12 and 13, we began this conversation about lights during the superintendent's entry plan conversations. We had a number of board meetings through March, April, June, and July, where we began to gather information. The board approved a contract with the architects to begin some design and to talk about, beginning to gather information in terms of traffic, lighting, environmental studies. We've looked at those, reviewed those, shared those with the public, we've had lots of conversation about that at this point. So we, as we moved into August, we began to engage the community in a broader conversation. So we mailed a letter directly to the residents around the school. We've sent out a newsletter talking about it, we've advertised, there's been PTA newsletters and so forth, all talking about this potential project. And the board decided to move forward and declared themselves as lead agency for the environmental review in August. And we have our, we've just talked really a little bit about the public meeting, so we had our first public meeting in September. We've had articles in the Democrat and Chronicle, and in the Penfield Post in October. Just now, we had a second public meeting, and we also included some information in our September newsletter. So what's next? We've had, we've gathered lots of data, we've had lots of conversation. Really, tonight, we are finalizing the scope. So at this point, I think that unless there is a different decision on the board, the intention would be to go forward with the scope as it currently exists in terms of the athletics, the PE and athletics project. That's important that we know that, because at the November 5th meeting, if we stick with the schedule that we've been discussing, the board would need, will need to make a secret determination that there's no substantial environmental impact. If that's done, if that's successfully adopted, then at the December board meeting, the board can set a vote date. And based on the schedule, the earliest really potential date would be in February, February 13th has been identified as a potential vote date. So some future conversations yet to happen, but we're beginning to move into the final stages of this. Whoops. Are there any questions? Yes?
Tom?
We're not anticipating any secret issues, right?
At this point, I think not. You know, we, the, the standard is that there needs to be, you know, substantial, uncorrectable, I, the, the legal language escapes me, I should memorize it. But at this point in conversations with Mr. Primo, I don't believe that there, that I think that the board could move forward based on what we know today.
Yeah, 'cause that would've come up before, obviously.
That's the, that was, you know, it would've come up in those hearings, it would've come up, you know, through our conversations, and it just hasn't.
The other thing, you know, I know when we had the public hearings on the, on the facilities for the lights, a lot of residents were concerned about energy usage, and as I look at the security project, the energy usage is gonna be huge compared to that.
Yes.
So I guess the, the point is, I, I think you've talked about this going down the road, but our energy use and our consumption and the alternatives are gonna become more and more important, because everything in the security project...
Uses electricity.
Uses more.
That's a fine point.
Uses more electricity, and it looks like the lights are minimal use compared to that, so.
Yeah, the, I mean, there will be some savings. The, you know, so, for example, part of the security project has a, is a plan to replace some of those wall pack lights that you see around, on, like, this building's a good example, as you walk around there, they're pretty dim, they're sort of, they sort of give a dull yellow glow, and they're fairly energy inefficient. So we would replace them with more energy-efficient lights. But at the same hand, time, we would put on more. So, you know, it, it, your point's correct.
Yeah, other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. So this concludes superintendent's report.
That was, that was number 101, and that was outstanding, Mark, thank you. Nice finish.
Thank you. Board members, we are on page three of your agenda, board business. Financial items. We have donations for the district, donations totaling $6,587 for items in the 2013-2014 budget have been granted to the district for the purpose of arts in education by Cobble's Elementary PTA and Indian Landing Elementary HSA, as well as to purchase a yearbook printer by the Bay Trail Yearbook Club. May I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve an amount, an amendment totaling $6,587 to the 2013-2014 budget as shown above? The amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items, and express its gratitude to the donors for their generous support of Penfield Schools. Second. Questions or comments? Thank you, all those in favor, five in favor, none opposed, thank you. Policy review. So the policy committee has been busy, and policies are gonna start coming your way. You have several policies in your packet, and I think Catherine, on behalf of the policy committee, which is composed of Catherine, Camille Ritten, and myself, and Dr. Grimm is gonna guide us through those policies and tell you a little bit about each one of them.
Okay, first, we have policy 6180, which is staff and student relations. And this is a new policy recommended by Uriwon Bosse's. It's in regard to fraternization between staff and students, and it just spells it out. The second one is policy 7420, sports and the athletic program. This, changes in this, this is an existing policy. And, let's see, wait a minute. Okay, yes. An existing policy regarding Title IX, but there's changes in the policy which are related to concussion management. And then policy 7450 is fundraising, which is updated to, you can see in your packet, there's a lot that we've crossed out and that's been changed, but it's an up, it's updated to explain what door-to-door means, because that's been a little bit of a question. Door-to-door meaning interaction with people or neighbors that they know, which the policy stated, states it's okay, but for safety reasons prohibits going to strangers' homes. And seven, policy 7522 is concussion management, another new policy of reitera, excuse me, reiterating the law. management, another new policy, reiterating, excuse me, reiterating the law regarding concussion management. We have been doing what the policy dictates, but now the policy supports the practice. All of these policies will be posted on the website for view and public comment. And we are also asking and suggesting when the members of the board go to their PTA and HSA meetings, that you invite people to check the website for the policies under review and to look them over and to encourage comment.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yep.
Any questions or comments, board members? All right. Thank you. So, these policies will come back to us for a second reading and then for adoption, provided we don't have any more feedback or changes to them. All right. Textbook approval. We had a presentation at a previous board meeting regarding Ender's Shadow. At this time, may I have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approve the above recommended textbook, Ender's Shadow for grade level 12? Questions, comments? Thank you. Just one question. Did we have any comments from the public about it, or from students even, or anything? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. All those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you. President's remark. I just want to remind you that this week is New York State School Board Convention. Some of us will be attending, and the district will be having a presentation there regarding data and the use of data. So, this is exciting. We will also be honoring Nancy Bradstreet there, you know, with the award she received from NESPRA. So, this should be an exciting weekend full of learning. Today, Dr. Grimm and myself met with Gwen, our student representative, to talk about her role as student representative. And this is part of the responsibilities of board president, and we always did that with superintendent. We also had with us Mr. Paul Gabey, the advisor to student council. So, it was a great conversation about, you know, Gwen being the representative of the student body and, you know, her responsibilities, and especially having two-way communication between the board and the high school, telling, you know, the high school student body, okay, what is the board doing right now, and also telling us what is happening at the high school. And you can see from the reports she has, I mean, I don't think she needed much guidance from us. She does a great job, but it was just good to sit down and talk with them about what they're doing. Would you like to add something, Dr. Grimm?
No, I think it was great. The student council is a wonderful opportunity for students to exhibit and learn about leadership. And having our teacher, Paul Gabey, be a part of that, and his expertise as a government teacher, I think it's an excellent model, and we're looking forward to trying to enhance that. He commented on the student leadership that he currently has, as just being wonderful. They've been involved all four years of their schooling, and it's just a great time to be able to utilize that expertise that exists right in front of us.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. The last thing I'd like to talk about is, you know, I mentioned the meeting that Dr. Grimm and myself attended for Monroe County School Board. And one of the highlights there was looking at the posters that are going to be featured at the airport by MC Speak, which is a committee comprised of businesses, school superintendents, school board members, and just, it's a very big committee, but they've done an outstanding work at coming up with very big posters. And the first ones that are going to be posted are going to be at the airport, actually. And they're really just highlighting the excellence of education in Monroe County. So, just like, you know, when you're walking out of the airport in the terminal, when you see the big St. John Fisher ones and, you know, everything, all the ones that are featured there, there's going to be some for Monroe County schools. And that is really nice. And I think we should be getting those into formats that we can use also. So, you know, we'll come up with some creative ways on how we can use them too. And it's all about, you know, telling people, Monroe County schools are not just average schools. We are way up there. So, you know, this was very exciting. And the work of this committee has been just wonderful. So, that's it for president's remark, I believe. And we have unfinished business, new business, legislative updates. Mr. Piper?
Speaking of way up there, legislative business, in your packet tonight, you have just another one of our white papers. And this particular one deals with high-stake testing and assessments, which we heard a lot about tonight. And I think the bottom line on this particular paper is that we don't have flexibility, and we want flexibility from New York State in regard to this, because we are a high-performing district. And basically, the assessments and the testing tend to dumb down something compared to what we're doing. So, that in a nutshell is that assessment, and I will continue to, the assessment of the assessment, I will continue to bring you our white papers. One thing just to note, as our next meeting will be on election day, which is an important day, not so big in New York State this year, but one of the things I want to remind all of our constituents is the fact that two to three times a year, you'll get something from your legislator that will be an update from your senator or your assemblyman. And on the back of it, there's a little comment piece that, you know, most of us might take that and utilize it for something else. But it's important, and we did this at the PTAs last year, we talked about, if you get that in the mail, take it the next day, write on the comment line, "I support Penfield Schools. Help support us by eliminating unfunded mandates." So, we talked about this last year. So, if we could just get everyone to do this three times a year, but do it that night when you get it, because I don't want to ask for a raise of hands. I want to keep those and read through them, and the shelf life is very slim. But there's always a comment piece on there. So, if we could just do that and spread the word about that, that, you know, we support Penfield Schools, and we want, in essence, our legislators to support it too. And you may have to throw a stamp on there. I'm not sure if it's paid for by the Senator Assembly, but I think it's worth it, because the bottom line is, when they hear from everyone out there, that's more important than when they hear from any officials of any school district or anything like that. They want to hear from the regular people. So, I pass on that little bit of information.
That's a great idea, John. Thank you for that. Any questions or comments for John, board members? Yes, Catherine?
John, how likely, if at all, do you think we could, on the state level, change that lack of flexibility? You know, is that, is that a pipe dream, or is that something that could really be worked out?
Well, I believe this position paper is adopted by the New York State School Boards Association, so it's a piece of the legislative platform. So, you know, Mark and I were talking earlier about another piece. And what happens every September, locally, we put together our priorities as school boards, and then the Monroe County School Board's Executive Committee of the presidents and superintendents approve that legislative agenda. And then we put ours in place, but we also feel that it is then shared with the other school boards associations across the state on a higher level. And high stakes testing, actually, we had an amendment that went through the Board of Directors at the convention last year from Fairport. So, that was added to the agenda. So, things can happen, and it just involves the effort. We, as a group, pushed for the Constitutional Convention Amendment three years, three years ago, and that became adopted. So, things can happen. And again, it always involves a priority in the near future in looking at it, because the life of any initiative, at the beginning stage of a life initiative in the Assembly or Senate, to the end is generally seven to 10 years, you know, from something being instituted and being passed, unless, unless it's critical, it's emergent, and it's based on something that impacts the whole state.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for John? All right. Thank you. And this concludes new business. Board members, there's a reminder that our board retreat is at St. John Fisher College. We originally had Bay Trail, but definitely at St. John Fisher College on October 29th. There being no further business, may I have a motion, please, that the meeting be adjourned at 9:27 p.m.? Questions, comments? Thank you. All those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you.[1782.48][1782.48][music]